Good evening. At this time, I call a regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission to order. The date is April 13th, the time is 7:05. Please join me in pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, we're going to have a roll call, and we have some new members with us, so as the new members say their name, give us a little who they are, where they're from, and they're new on the board, starting with Caroline.
Hi, my name is Caroline Reynus. I'm from Wallingford. I was born and raised in Wallingford. I have children between my husband and myself. We have five kids. I'm a law student. I am graduating in December, and I do work with the Earth Law Center, and that interest piqued my interest in what was going on in the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, and I am Republican.
Ally?
Ally McKean.
Nick?
Nick Kern.
Jeff?
Jeffrey Nekia.
And you're new with us, too, Jeff?
Yeah, this is my second meeting, first as a commissioner. Last meeting, I was an alternate, lived in Wallingford for about 20 years, graduating from UConn next month with my masters in public health, and I'm a pharmacist at Bristol Hospital.
Bristol, Bristol, good. Jim Vitale. I also like to make mention that we, one of our previous commissioners has gone on to Board of Education, Jennifer, and we thank her for her service. Passerelli?
Passeretti.
Passeretti.
Jennifer Passeretti.
We thank her for her service. Okay, consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of November 3rd of 2021. Any comments or corrections? Any issues? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting of November 3rd, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A call for a vote. Caroline?
Yes.
Ally?
Abstain.
Nick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, going on to old business. Now, the first couple items are dealing with administration approval, keeping in mind that we have not had a meeting since November. Aaron and I have been in contact on some of these issues, and it was determined that it could be done through an administration approval. First one was application A 21 10.2 136 Chimney Hill Road. This was in addition to the garage, and there was, what, a water course kind of in the area, and as long as the contractor stayed away from the water course, it seemed to be taken care of, and I think Aaron dealt with that. Second one was A 21 11.1 400 Elm Street, also known as 80 Worthen Brook Drive, Pat Wall Field. This was a kiosk installation just coming across the brook to the back of the field. This was for taking kids out there and doing biological work along the water course, not going in to play baseball, Pat Wall Field. So we felt that that was a similar situation, it could be approved. Going on to application A 18 1.2 801 North Colony Road, 6 Beaumont Road, Battens Brook, NERP Holdings acquisitions. This is for a bond release, but there's three phases to this program. There's a bond release, there is a transfer of bond, and when they designed the original building and the property, they left one area undeveloped for a future facility. They have the facility, I believe it's a medical center going in, a medical office center, and now they were asking for determination if it needed a wetland permit. So let's start with the bond release first. Aaron?
All right. What went out in your packet on Friday night was an environmental planners' report, which summed up the three elements that the chairman has just talked about. The bond, this project was approved in 2018 with two bonds, $20,000 bond for the upland area of the development, which is the tractor supply facility, and a $10,000 bond for restoration of the brook, which is Payton's, it's called Payton's Brook, and it was in need of restoration, lot of invasives, lot of vines, lot of dead trees, and so on. So there's ten, they had a six-year plan to restore the river corridor, so they're just asking for the bond released on the upper, on the tractor supply area, and I would recommend release of the bond.
Okay.
I did go out there, I found nothing amiss. I mean, there was things amiss in the summer, but they straightened it out, and I would not recommend releasing the other bond, the $10,000.
We haven't got that far. Let's take one bond at a time.
Okay.
Okay, so you're recommending the release, the return of the $20,000 bond?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion regarding application A 18 1.2 108 North Colony Road, 6 Beaumont Road, to release the first phase of bond of $20,000.
Of the upland review area.
Upland and review area.
Second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, a call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now, number two is, which one do you want to handle next?
Oh, maybe under new business on your agenda, it'd be E is new business, under that, let's go to number two, that same property we're discussing here, this is a...
Permit change name.
It's to transfer the permit from one entity to the other entity, which they should have done a long time ago, but they're doing it now, so yes, but the commission has to approve that transfer.
They have to approve it?
Yeah, it's in our regulations.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the bond to the new name.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to transfer the bond to the new permee regarding application A 18 1.2 108 North Colony Road, 6 Beaumont Road, from NERP Holding to I Am the Walrus LLC.
I'll entertain a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? Offer a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the third one came into a question of whether they needed a wetland permit, and it was determined that it wasn't necessary, is that correct, Aaron?
Yes, now, this is on, shows on page two of the agenda, under Reports and Communications. If you go down to number 14, this letter came in from their project engineer, which I asked him to submit, to prove that he, in fact, did not need a wetland permitting. They had applied to planning and zoning to move ahead with this medical building, and so he did that, and that was, that went out in your packet, the letter that in great detail explains how he arrived at that conclusion.
But that doesn't need a vote, then?
It doesn't need a vote? No, I wanted to, if you, you may see it on the planning and zoning agenda, I wanted you to understand why they could, because planning and zoning doesn't go ahead without a report out for wetlands.
Well, that's what this book, okay.
And they got that report.
That's taken care of, then. Okay. All right, that's item three. Item four, A 21 12.1 4 Laser Lane.
Okay, this, as you can see on the agenda, this was submitted in December, and how you can see that, 12.1, that indicates December, the first application in December. Anyway, they came in in December, and they would have been received at the December meeting. We did not have a December meeting, so by statute, they're received at the next regular meeting. So they were received legally by statute on December 3rd, so, and then we didn't meet. They weren't ready to go ahead, however, so they didn't, it didn't put them in a bad way that we weren't meeting, because they were making some in-house decisions and weren't ready to go ahead. So then they granted us a letter of extension on February 28th, and by statute, and I, some of these things I'm saying for the new members, Mr. Chairman, there's, we have 65 days from which to act from receipt of an application. If we don't act, the commission has to request a extension from the applicant. They always grant the extension. So they granted the extension, in this case with a letter, and that brought them to tonight. And as I explained to the applicant, you're done, tonight, you're done, we're out of time tonight. They were not ready, their site plan wasn't finished, it had about 15 things missing from it, so they understood that, and they submitted a letter of withdrawal.
Okay.
They will be coming back, I fully expect them to come back and apply in May and be ready to go.
Okay, A 22 3.1 41 North Plains Highway. Now, is this the log cabin A-frame?
Yes, is someone here?
Okay, now...
Oh, yes.
The interesting part is north, so guys don't get confused, North Plains Highway runs from Route 5 by McDonald's all the way down to almost Parkway, where I think Jonathan Gavin has got the last building on that. Not to be confused with North Plains Industrial Road, which runs from 68 all the way to Washington Avenue. So, is there a presentation being made?
I think the owner, is Mr. Barrett in the auditor?
You sort of do, come on up. I remember when that building prior to the A-frame was hit by lightning and burned to the ground.
I heard about that, the owner of the house that...
Wilson was the name.
Yeah, it was her grandmother or grandfather owned it.
Goes back a few years.
She showed me a bunch of pictures of it.
Okay.
Seems to be.
Name and address for the record?
My name is Steve Barrett, and it's 41 North Plains Highway.
Get a little closer to the mic, please, or the mic to you.
Steve Barrett, 41 North Plains Highway.
Okay. All right, Aaron, I think you probably is better explain what's going on here.
Okay, let's see, let's see when they applied. All right, so they applied in March, so they were received and at the March meeting, technically. And so we do have a little bit of time here, I'll watch that extension timeline. But an environmental planners' report went out in your packet Friday night on this. It's, there was photographs, I sent color photographs of the stream, there's what they call a flashy stream, meaning a stream that when enduring heavy storms, it runs really hard and erodes, and erodes the bank, and then quiets down after, and so it's about, runs about eight feet to 20 feet across, depending on where, it meanders, there's severe erosion on this stream. It goes under in a large culvert, 48-inch culvert, large culvert, under North Plains Highway, and then comes out into Mr. Barrett's property. I did recommend that he contact the Southwest Conservation District for help.
What are we trying to do here? I mean, what's he trying to do?
Okay. Mr. Barrett wants to, he wants to have an above-ground pool for his family, except he doesn't want to put it right by the stream, because the stream floods, so he wants to put in a kind of raised yard with a four-foot retaining wall, like in a C shape, up against his sunroom of his house, and then fill it with some fill, and then set the above-ground pool in there, and in that way, it's, not only is it on a better level with his sunroom, but it's protected should that stream ever flood. He didn't want his pool to get hurt by that.
Okay, and so what's the problem?
He also wanted to relocate a gazebo. Right now, there's an old wooden gazebo, and he just wanted to take that, put that out of the way to make this. Okay. Often, when there's a homeowner application, I don't have them go out and hire a soil scientist to tell us exactly where the wetlands are, so I don't know exactly where the wetlands are. This is up above, I think it's not that important to know where the wetland line is, it's more important maybe to know where the floodplain line is in this setting. So as I explained to Mr. Barrett, that he does need a wetland permit, and he immediately came in and applied for one. The issue is, there is the floodplain thing going on, and I said, that's under the purview of the planning department. This commission doesn't deal with floodplains. I mean, we're interested in them, but we don't hand out flood permits. That's the purview of the planning department. So, as I wrote in my environmental planners' report, I have several recommendations, I don't know if any of you got a chance to drive by, you really can see this right from the road. I don't know if you want to move ahead with it tonight, I know the owner is eager, he's got his pool all ordered and his fill sitting there waiting, and I do strongly recommend him stabilizing that stream, not as a part of this application, but to work with the Southwest Conservation District to work up a stream bank restoration, because it's eating away at his property every time it rains, with the big storms, and he's losing soil to the river. And there is, he did put up somebody, I don't know if it was this, Mr. Barrett's owned it since 2016?
Yeah, I've owned it for six years, yeah.
Okay, so, did you put up the split rail fence of the person before?
I put up the split rail fence.
Okay, so some of the, to fold in part, there's a split rail fence that runs, it should have gotten a permit, it runs along the stream area in the back, and so I'd like to talk about this with the commission and see if they want to move forward with it. In the application, he draws out, if you have his application in front of you, he drew out exactly what he wanted to do, where he wanted to place the retaining wall, and my photographs show the area. I did say, could you put it in the back? What about the back? Well, maybe Mr. Barrett could explain why he doesn't want the back. I know in the back, on the north side on the back, is the septic system, so he can't put it there, but maybe he can explain why he can't put it on the south side in the back?
There is quite a big hill in that, in my portion of that yard, and it would be, I would be doing the same thing, it's very close to the river, so I'd have to do the same permit, so I was just looking to do it closer to the house, as I have a young daughter, and I want to make sure I can watch her while she's in the pool. That was really...
Well, you've got a whole bunch of things going on, I'm surprised the brook is washing out, because that brook starts up at North Farms Reservoir, I believe, and, but does this brook run in by Gavin's property?
No.
This is the one that comes out of PNA Pond?
Yes, yes.
Exactly, okay. I think it's the one by Gavin's property, I believe, starts up by North Farms Reservoir, and as it crosses North Main Street, it reduces itself pretty steadily down through there in the sand. But you're in the sand there, I don't know. Nick, have you got any thoughts on it? You know we're talking, right?
I think he needs to look into the stabilization of the soil before he does anything, and is there enough room where he wants to put the pool from where the brook is, that there's not going to be encroachment in the wetland area?
Well, like I say, I didn't have the owner go out and get a soil scientist, I'm not sure where the wetlands would be, I mean, you could look at the photograph, I don't know if, I can pass it around.
We got the same one, haven't we?
Yeah, we have the same.
Yeah, okay, so I'm not sure where the wetlands actually end, or, you know, this was filled, this, this area was filled, I don't know, 30 years ago, some, I don't know exactly when, to make that little homestead. I'm sure it was all wetlands and swamp back in the day.
You're talking 30 years ago, you're talking 80 years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, it was built in 67.
67?
That's, that's when the rebuild, that's when the log home was built.
You could be right, I...
Yeah, that was, that's when it got hit by lightning. It had been there, certainly was there, maybe it got added on to it many times, but I guarantee it was there for another 20, 30 years before that.
I, I did, we did have a conversation about stabilizing the stream, and Mr. Barrett expressed interest in at least stabilizing it next to the house, maybe not the whole thing down there, you know, it goes on his property quite a ways back, but definitely in that bend near his house, really, that's where I would concentrate any money being put into stabilization, although that was not, that's not the purpose of his application. He wants a pool this summer for the kids, so he wasn't thinking, it was just new information to him that, about stabilization, and that there's an outfit out there that could help him with the technique, the technical part. Of course, he'd have to pay for the actual stone and construction and stabilization.
What are you thinking about it to use for stabilization?
I don't know, I kind of leave it to the experts, meaning, this used to be Roman Rosinsky, we would, he was an expert at stream stabilization. Sometimes he'd use quarrel logs, sometimes he'd use stone, and often he'd put plantings in, like willows along there, something like that.
Ally?
How close is your retaining wall going to be to this stream as it's shown now?
So it'd be probably about 10 feet off of the stream.
Halfway between the stream and the existing gazebo?
Correct.
Okay.
What was it going to be constructed of?
I'm going to use cinder blocks, cement, and rebar. My uncle owns a construction company, so I would have him do it with me.
Jeff, any comments?
So the wall you're going to put in has no effect on, it's not going to do any stabilization or anything, you're just putting a wall in so you can raise the yard up to put the pool on it?
Correct, yeah, I didn't really know anything about stabilizing any stream or anything like that, and over the six years that I've owned the house, it's only really flooded twice and came up, just up over the lip of the, where the grass is. It does obviously erode, there is little sand pockets and whatnot, but it's, it seems very minimal over the six years. Again, it's only six years, so I, I'm not an expert on it myself, but it doesn't, doesn't seem to be too bad.
Looks like it gets a little eddy right here. There's like a little edge where it would eddy when it would be filled up, that's my opinion, anyway.
At one time or another, it looks like it's eroded pretty well. With this type of soil, if we get a hard rain, it's going to find its weakest point to erode, and down through here is all, I don't know if that was filled there, or it looks like it might have been bank run gravel. It looks like the gravel is washed out, the piece down in that.
Off to the left in this picture with the gazebo in it?
You gotta stick in the mic.
Yes.
Sorry, off to the left with the picture with the gazebo in it over here?
Yeah.
That's...
Just on the, on the right side, like more or less in front of the gazebo from this photo, on the right side of the stream.
There are some pieces of stone in there, actually, when the one flood happened this past year, the town ended up coming out and lining the side of my yard with stone, because it washed away some of that, and it washed away some of a telephone pole in the front of my yard.
We just wouldn't want, we wouldn't want to see your wall undermined in your time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm obviously not against stabilizing the stream and making it so that doesn't happen, I just, I'd never been told or had any information about that, that's all.
Could you put the retaining wall closer to your sunroom? Meaning, not 10 feet from the stream, but like 20 feet from the stream?
That would probably, I wouldn't be able to fit the pool in that area if I were to move it that far in.
See, there's the application, there's the application, there's the...
Aaron, I think he's going to have to address the stream further down the road. If he wants to be 10 feet from the bank and put his wall up, he's got to understand that somewhere in the next whatever, there's going to be, if we have heavy rains, there's maybe some more erosion that's going to get closer to his wall and make it tumble.
Oh, yes.
So he's got to understand, this is kind of a Band-Aid for you, because you're not going to fix the stream unless the Public Works is going to come out there and lace that side of the stream with a riprap for you. So I'd be concerned about that, just put that in the back of your mind, if we allow you to do this, that you're going to have to address that down the road.
Okay, I understand, thank you, thank you, sorry.
You know what I find interesting, that when we did the project up where BJ's is now, who came in, who was the government agency that came in? NRCS?
Yes, up in Tallent, yeah.
Yeah, and they said, don't riprap it, leave it like it is, where the developer wanted to do some riprapping for us, and he said, they leave it alone. You almost got the same sandy conditions here.
But if...
Anyway, we got too many, we've got two different issues going on here. We've got a brook that we're really not the issue here at the moment, it's under discussion, but we've got the, the application that wants to put a retaining wall to fill in, to put a pool in. So, how's the commissioner feel about that? Ally?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
You're okay with it?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Nick?
I'm comfortable with it, as long as Aaron's comfortable with it.
This stream needs help. This stream does need help.
Yeah, but this stream is not on this application.
Well, how about a condition of approval, then? Then he, that he works with the Southwest Conservation District to get something together?
Well...
It's got to be done.
How do you feel about the retaining wall?
Well, it's not just the retaining wall, it's everything, the whole, retaining and the filling and the pool, everything, together.
Yes.
I did check with a local engineer what he would charge to delineate the FEMA floodplain boundary, okay? And it's a lot, just to decide where that floodplain line is, all right?
Let's go, Nick, Nick made a comment that he was okay with doing this after listening to you. What is your feeling on this?
It's awfully close to that stream, that's why I asked Mr. Barrett, could we put it back another 10 feet?
And he said?
And he said, no, it's where he wants it, essentially, because it, I don't know, I don't exactly know why, but it meets, it meets, it lines up with his house better.
10 feet back would still be the same amount of distance away from the river, I don't see where that would make any difference for the pool or the retaining wall.
Oh, I meant the whole thing, the whole thing moves back 10 feet.
10, 10 feet, like closer to my house, my sun porch?
Yeah.
I, that would give me not enough room to actually fit the pool in that area.
Okay, maybe your drawing isn't to scale, I don't know, this, the drawing you handed in. What's this, what is this dark rectangle in your drawing?
That's the gazebo.
That's a shadow.
Oh, it's a shadow? So you have the pool exactly where the gazebo is in your drawing?
Correct.
All right, okay.
Which is where you actually recommended it in this paperwork.
Okay, I thought, I thought the retaining wall would start where the gazebo is, and then the pool's behind, behind the gazebo, I mean, behind the retaining wall.
The pool would be basically where the gazebo is.
That's awfully close to the stream. You got to have the retaining wall, then fill, then the pool.
The pool would go on the fill.
Do you want to draw on here how close you, you want it to this stream?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I was just wondering if you could draw on this, where you actually wanna draw the, install that retaining wall.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, of course I could.
It would come up like that, right? Kinda like, like-
Right, just, it's the same as the, the drawing you asked me to do in the other picture, but I, I'm more than happy to do it.
Okay, I have an idea. If he really is determined to put it there, why don't we condition in on riprapping, I, I don't know, twenty feet of that stream?
Are you in agreement, are you in agreement with that?
I, I would have to find out the cost of, of that.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, the gazebo that's there now, right, so you wanna put the pool where the gazebo is now, correct? Has that gazebo ever been damaged by the water?
Um, the waters come underneath it, yeah.
Okay.
That's, I just don't want the-
But it's still there and still standing, and-
Absolutely, yeah.
How's the soil around it right now?
Um, it's, it's completely fine, there's grass, everything's okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
There's woodchucks currently living under the gazebo. I'm trying to get rid of them, I can't get rid of them.
Jeff, have you got some comments, any comments?
Not at this point, no.
Well, I, I- Aaron, I think you're going one step too far, we're trying to riprap the brook, and we're either gonna approve or deny the application of the, of the retaining wall.
I, I have a question for Nick, maybe to explain. When he puts this in retaining wall, does it go below grade? Like, how does, do we protect it from, if it floods? Is, is the wall below the grade a little bit?
It depends if he's gonna put a slab footing, or he's gonna drop the blocks down inside and then put the rebar in them to hold, you know, to make, reinforce it. I don't know-
The second one you were talking about is what I would do.
What, to reinforce each block?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Who, who is this, are you, are you gonna hire a contractor to do this?
Um, I grew up doing construction, and, and my uncle owns a construction company, so I've worked for him in the past, and here he told me if it gets approved and everything, he would come out and help me with it.
Okay, well, have you looked at the, uh, the block, the decorative block that United has there?
I have, I, I just didn't wanna speak to them until I found out, you know, if I was getting approved, I didn't wanna start opening-
Because I, I mean, I think that, well, of course, you're gonna do the labor yourself on the, on the cement block. What are they, are they up to around a hundred bucks, Nick?
Yeah.
And what are they for length?
Three feet.
Three?
Two by threes.
Two by three?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a, uh, they're two feet high also, aren't they?
Yeah, three, three by two by two.
I mean, they'd, they'd put a wall up pretty quick, pretty stable, probably more stable than cement block and rod.
I mean, I, I would be absolutely okay with that. I just didn't look into it any further till I, I wanted to know what I was doing here before I made any commitment to talking to them about it, that was all.
I think that, Aaron says she hooked you up with the CC Conservation?
South Central Regional-
South Central Regional-
Southwest Conservation District, yes, that's who I recommend.
Have you notified them?
Correct, that's to stabilize the, the river.
Well, look, we're halfway through April already. You're gonna be the first Wednesday in May. Can you gather some more information regarding your costs and whether you can riprap and get that all done?
Or even if riprap is the appropriate thing?
I'm sorry, gotta go to Mike, come-
Or even if riprap is actually the appropriate thing?
Yes, I mean, can you get these answers, questions answered by May, our next May meeting?
Yeah, I believe she said that, um, that to speak with them, the consultation with them was free, so they can come out and help me, so I can get an idea as to what I would need to do, absolutely.
Well, with your uncle, you should be able to calculate how many yards of riprap you need, and of course, it depends on how you're gonna put it in place, too, that, you've been through this route, and what it needs. All right, so we're gonna, you're looking at me, what's, what is it, Darren?
No, I'm good.
I'm only, I'm only concerned that up the street, the next lot up, we had a, a water drainage issue with the concrete guy, and they made him take the riprap out and change the whole setup in it. Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah, I don't think it's affecting this stream. What Mr. Gavin did, I don't think it impacted this, is that what you mean?
What I'm saying is, the Army Corps engineer's gonna let him riprap the bank, or is he, you know, this is what needs to be had, somebody professional has to tell him what he can and cannot do. I hate to see him put riprap along the bank and find out the Army Corps engineer says no to it.
That's a good question, and there is a threshold for that, and maybe the town engineer would know the threshold for that.
Does Mr. Gavin own United Concrete?
Does what?
Mr. Gavin own United Concrete?
He's, he's your neighbor.
He is, okay. I thought so, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't wanna speak, speak without knowing. Um, if you're talking about the river, that's like a couple hundred feet away from the river that I'm talking about, that's the one you're talking about, they had to remove the rip, the riprap?
That's a, well, that's a different situation, where the water crossed in the highway and went into that parking lot he built for, uh, Piles, Miles, Pillars, whatever he was trying to make at the time. It was a little different situation. All right, so are we, are we in agreement? You're gonna get a couple of questions answered, what's the questions answer? You gotta specifically ask them the questions? You're gonna send them a note?
Okay, I'll, I'll put in writing what we're looking for, after, you know, tomorrow I'll write it up and get it to you, but I think what we're looking for is to see if Southwest Conservation District can come at the site and have an opinion of things. Is riprap the right way?
Basically, yes, if, if riprap is the suggestion to somewhat control the bank, are you willing to riprap the bank in the, in conjunction with the retaining wall?
Is the owner, you mean?
The owner.
Okay, and I'd like a little sketch of, like a side sketch of the retaining wall, like what-
Well, it depends, it could either, if he uses the blocks that United has, it's just gonna be straight up.
Okay, and I guess, is the fill, when you fill behind it, is it halfway up, like two feet up or four feet up, how much, how high is the dirt gonna be behind the retaining wall?
Um, however high the fifty-four cubic yards you approved me for would be, I don't know exactly what that would be, but if, if it's like two and a half to three feet, then that's, you know, roughly what I would be looking for, I just gotta see how much fill it would take to get to that spot.
Okay, well, we can do the math.
Well, two blocks high, four feet high, it's probably gonna take that, you know, we don't have the square footage of the area you're doing, but-
Yeah, I don't know exactly what it would be yet, I would just have to kinda do the math.
Well, you're getting your, aren't your elevations, it's gonna be based on the pool with the surrounding area there, you're not gonna walk up into the pool area.
You would have a couple steps into the raised area that I'm making, yes.
Up, up there, you'd be able to turn, determine the yardage, but that, those are the numbers you need to, to go. If the riprap's too much money, what's gonna be the answer? Say, "No, I cannot afford the riprap," but I still want the retaining wall.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I just obviously wanna do this the correct way to make sure that there's longevity to it, and, um, that I'm able to try to get it done. If I can't, then, you know, I can't.
Well, I think it shows, the pictures that she has, I found on the other, on the environmental report, you got quite a, I don't wanna say an OXPO working there, but you've got one bend in the river that's sending the water back to your side of the river, and of course, that in turn is, uh, aggravating the problem.
That's actually where the erosion's happening, majority of it, it's going into the, uh-
The bends?
Into the, where Lucibello, where it hits Lucibello, 'cause it shoots right out of the pipe from under the road, and it-
Right at it.
Goes right into that, and by the time it hits that, it kinda calms down a bit, and then comes around the bend into my yard. Still obviously running fast, but it, um, it doesn't flood that often, that's, that's the only thing.
See, I, you're not, if you took out in this picture here, if that island of gravel was out of there, the water would come closer to the edge, if you put the riprap against the fireside, and it would shoot down straighter down your, your section, and not have that, that OXPO effect. Anyway, okay, you, you know what we're looking for?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, and I would say, work with Aaron, get hold of Aaron before the next meeting, also to go over any, or what you've discovered, or you and Roman have taken care of. Okay?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I do wanna point out, Roman has retired, but-
Oh, we got a new Roman, huh?
The new executive director is very good, Chris Sullivan, yes.
Chris?
His name is Chris Sullivan.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Application A, twenty-two, three point two, one fifty-five, East Street, Fergie Management Corp.
Good evening, my name is Tom Linden from Linden Landscape Architects in Weathersfield here, representing the owner, Fergie Management Corp. I have with me Frank DeRosa, the special projects manager for Fergie, and Jeff Duval, the plant manager of the plant here in Wallingford. We are here with an additions project to the building that impacts FEMA flood zone and wetlands areas, and detention basin that was part of the twenty-eighteen approval when they paved the driveway. We'll show you all that as we get through this. Um, in Aaron's report, there were a couple of, the first two items were items concerning, um, issues with the twenty-eighteen approval that she noticed when she was out there looking at the site for this application. So, we'll talk about those things first, and then we'll get on to this actual application for the addition. So, I'm looking at the screen, and you guys are looking at me. Doesn't make sense, does it? So, the, the first slide is an aerial view of the facility on East Street, one fifty-five East Street. Um, to the east is Allegheny Steel, to the north is an AT&amp;T property, to the west is the Quinnipiac River, and south of that, where the entrance is off of the end of East Street, that's also part of the Allegheny Steel property. So, in this aerial photo, the addition is gonna be in the northeast rear corner of the building. Um, we're also gonna do some work at this area here where the outlet for the storm drainage from all of the roof drainage and the drainage on this west side of the site is. That dark area right there is a detention basin that was created as part of the twenty-eighteen approvals. So, the, one of the first items in the report for issues from the twenty-eighteen approval project was, was, um, the DEP spill signs, that you have to actually see if you're actually up at the building, if you're, if you're far away, you don't see them. So, there are four spill stations around the building that all have the DEP permit sign, the DEP notification signs, the emergency phone number to call. So, those are actually there. There's also, I keep hitting the wrong button, in the back of the building, there was a sign that was part of that, which is a notification of a high watermark, that if the rear, and it's the northeast corner where we'll, we'll be working, if it floods back there to this point, truck traffic is no longer allowed to go through, the plant manager needs to be notified if he doesn't know it already to stop truck traffic from going around. So those are all things from the twenty-eighteen approval that are actually in place now. The other item, the, the next item in the, in Aaron's report is the detention basin that was created on the west side of the site as part of that twenty-eighteen approval. The issue here is the detention basin area out in the middle that receives the water, that's planted with some wetlands plants and stuff. The runoff from the pavement around the backside of the site was designed in that twenty-eighteen approval to slope towards this area that we're looking at here, and go through a grass swale that goes in, fills in, feeds into that area. Twenty-eighteen, nineteen, twenty, 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 four years of runoff into that. The area, it's, it's not eroded, but it's wet all the time, the grass doesn't grow there. There's a bit of a chan, what looks like a channel, um, which Aaron refers to as the hand dug trench going down the middle of that. When you look at it from this angle, it's, it's very narrow, two feet maybe at the most, but it's, all the water that's designed to run into that detention basin does exactly what it's supposed to do, it runs into that area. It just stays very wet, and the grass doesn't grow there. The other issue with that detention basin is the outlet structure to it, which is at the far end of what you're looking at in these pictures. In four years, has, the, the plants that are in there have grown very well and are starting to clog up that pipe, that's just a maintenance issue that they need to go in there and pull out some of that stuff so that the pipe doesn't clog, so that it functions the way it's supposed to. When it fills up, the overflow pipe allows the water to slowly get out of the detention basin, that's a maintenance issue that we'll take care of. I think the best solution to this problem right here, right now, is that rather than go in and start regrading things and trying to create a grass swale and try to grow grass again, which obviously doesn't work, it would cause more harm than good to that area and that detention basin. I think what our solution to this is going to be, is that we will put stone in this area where there is no grass growing, and put stone in that little trench that has created itself in there, so that the water can flow through, it'll be easier for them to maintain, they won't be trying to cut through mud, there won't be all that mud and everything, and the water will still flow off the pavement in through that swale the way it's supposed to do. You're, you're never gonna get grass to grow in there.
But you have, you, that water's being recharged right there.
The water, yes, it goes into that detention-
And if you put stone in there, you're not gonna get a recharge.
If we put three-quarter inch stone in this area where there's no grass, the water will pass through the stone.
I don't believe it. It'll dust up and filter up, and it'll end up running right straight through. Right now, we know it sits there and it recharges. And you, how are you gonna maintain it, given it's got stone? You're never gonna run a lawnmower over it, even if it starts to grow grass, you're gonna be a couple inches higher than it is now. I'm not, you've gotta rethink that, I believe. I'm not so sure, I, I haven't talked to my fellow commissioners, but I'm not so sure it's bad the way it is.
I thought we had it that way for the, any of the spoils that may be floating around in the yard would go in there, and nitrates or whatever would break down into the gra, grass, grassy swale, and then it would dissipate through the storm pipe or your catch basin. The other thing is, if we put, like, you put the stone in there, it sounds like a better place to put more, more product on the stone, 'cause it's not gonna sink into the mud. So, that's another issue that's gotta be addressed here, but I, I'd like to see it stay grass, and, um, you, you designed it with your, I don't know, you yourself or your company designed it to have a grassy swale there to catch the water, and then my thought was, you're trying to catch any impurities that might come off of there. When I say impurities, I'm just talking about, you know, fertilizer, it may be on somebody's feet, or, so, the stone thing is out, as far as I'm concerned.
We didn't design the twenty-eighteen project.
You didn't?
No.
Okay.
But you are correct. It's designed so that anything like that filters through into that detention system and can filter through grass. The comments in the report is that that looks like it's a hand dug trench that has no grass growing on it, and that's not what, that's not what it is. They didn't go back at some point after the 2018 project and dig a trench. That's just, that's the way it's functioning, so this is what you end up with. If you're okay with this, you're not gonna get grass to grow in this area that is now shown like that. That's just a function of the amount of water over the course of a year that goes in there and keeps that area wet, which is what it's supposed to do.
Well, it's done more than that. It's eaten a trench out.
It has as it's gotten all the way down towards the detention basin, so as the water builds up, as it's headed down towards where the plants are in the back, yes, the amount of water has created that little bit of a trench in there.
Ellie, any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Caroline? Jeff?
Not at this point.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Continue, please.
Pardon me? Before we move off this point, I'm confused why it's doing this at all. Why is it, it wasn't doing this a few years ago. Why has it started to do this? What changed on the site and now it's doing this, making a mud hole? What changed?
From, as I said, we did not design the improvements in 2018, but I've seen the set of plans that you people and planning and zoning approved from the 2018, and it is designed that the pavement in the back of that site is sloped to this point.
Parking spaces and everything.
And the truck driveway around the back, all of the pavement in the back of that slopes towards this point. There's no curb along this edge specifically so that the water can be directed towards that location. I don't know what it looked like before the 2018 project, whether that detention basin was there or what it was before that, but when I look at the design as somebody who does this kind of design, it looks like it's designed to draw, to take the water to that location for exactly what the commissioner said.
Did it shed?
So, in four, yes, it's doing its job, and in four years, it's creating a little bit of a gully.
Well, maybe that's, makes it obvious that all engineers are not perfect.
Exactly.
But?
I'm a landscape architect. But I'll tell my civil engineer that.
Would a curb, like a 30-foot-long curb there help? Meaning on the north side to keep the water from going and making a mud puddle?
On the north side?
North side. I think you want it to go, we don't wanna stop the water from going there. The client just wants to look at something besides mud.
Yeah, mud, mud, we don't want mud draining into the detention basin perpetually, right? So, how do we get it to not be mud?
If you put a curb there, Erin, it's gonna get trash from the trucks, so you gotta leave it open for the water to shed off into the, into that grassy area.
Maybe if we put plants there.
Maybe somebody ran in there with a lawnmower with wide tires and made a groove in there, and with all the water we've had, it's just eroded itself off. So, we talked to the maintenance man that's doing the lawnmower, and maybe he got stuck in there with his lawnmower.
Well, no, but I'm serious. Maybe if we put plants there, it wouldn't erode and they'd suck up the water, you know?
Plants or other grasses, I mean, Reed's Canary Grass will do wet, that wet feet. There's some other products that'll do wet, do well with wet feet. If that's what we're trying to do, I just don't think stone is the answer. Oh, we, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Anybody else want any questions first? We're all set.
And the last thing on the list was the temporary storage of materials along the west side driveway and parking pavement there. When Erin went through in March, I would, yeah, it was March, she noticed the materials, and I have pictures of the materials in February. So, the materials you're seeing here in this picture is all finished, finished product, bagged, it's on pallets, and it's all covered, all weatherproofed. It's simply storage of material before it gets shipped out. They're making material all winter long and it's just not getting shipped out until the spring season begins. So, it's material that they stored outside. They did contact the planning department to ask if it was okay to temporarily store outside, and the planning department said, yeah, as long as it's temporary, but they did not come to, they did not go to Erin, to Wetlands, thinking it was just a planning and zoning issue.
What's the, what's the chemical analysis of the product?
It's the various types of fertilizer that they make.
NPNK, all the different products within NPNK.
So, it's, the material, the material gets stored out there for two or three months, and the picture was February, and in early April, I think that was like April 2nd or 3rd, all the material has shipped out. So, it started going out slowly. It's a lot of material. It takes a lot of trucks to get it out of there. So, all of the material is gone. There's a couple of storage containers that they're either going to remove or move to a different location so they're not within the 50-foot buffer, which we'll see on the plan when we get to that plan. So, now knowing that there's a potential issue of where they store material for a short period of time, whether it's in the regulated area that you people are in charge of, they're gonna look at their operations over the course of the next year. It only happens in the winter. They're gonna look at their operations and see what they can and cannot do, and we'll go through the whole planning and zoning and wetlands commission regulations to see how they can do it. If they need to come back for a permit to temporarily store materials, we'll come back with a permit separate sometime in the future.
Well, I've got a major problem with that outside storage, primarily because what did Wallingford spend a fortune on the sewer treatment plant to eliminate phosphorus? And you have phosphorus outside for, ready somebody to back into it and break open the bags and down the river it goes. So, it's, it's an issue.
Yes.
Maybe you should look at your storage on the east side of the building where it's out of everybody's concern, because if you look at your high water level mark down there, and I've seen that area flood completely across with heavy rain, so, and I think, I believe we were all concerned about that when we gave you permission to do what you're doing. That was gonna be an isolated area to do nothing. Now, all of a sudden, you wanna store your product there for two or three months and you're not happy with the swale system for the drainage. We need to back up. If you need to find more space for your temporary storage up to three months, then maybe it should be on the east side of the building. I'm just giving you a sec.
Which is what they will look into.
Or maybe off-site.
Off-site.
That, that's the thing. We, we know that there's an issue now, and we will, they're going to look into it, and if we need a permit for it, we'll permit for it, and even we'll come back and tell you, hey, this is what we're gonna do. We'll, we'll let Erin know this is what we're gonna do. It's not gonna happen again, just so that you know, you know, even if we don't have to go through a formal permit process, just to keep you up to date on what they're gonna do with this issue to resolve it for next year. Okay?
If I may say something, Mr. Chairman. I was there at the end of the day today, and the packets, the storage is still by the wetland in the south. The one in the picture, right near the little wetland, that would be in the southwest corner of the site, that's still there. The rest of, most of the rest of material is gone except for the empty wooden pallets sitting, well, hundreds of them stacked around, but most of the things I took pictures of is all gone. The containers are there, but most of the rest of it's gone, but we still got the one that's there in front of the wetland tonight. It was, it's still there.
Okay.
Tonight? Yeah, I was there tonight at 5:30.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, we're back, this, this is the overall plan of the entire property again, which shows the area of work where the addition is going to go on the northeast side. There's a variety of lines on this plan that would show some of the regulatory areas. So, we have the Quinnipiac River to the north and east. There's a FEMA flood, floodwater zone AE line that runs right along here, along this north side of the building. It's just beyond the fence that's there. It's just outside of the fence that's there now and runs down that side of the property. What we added to that was, now, let me do the AE. So, there's two, two zone AEs. The zone AE line is right here, which is that detention area we were looking at. There's a zone AE line that's on this back northeast corner that does that. So, we're working within that zone AE area. You'll see a little later on as we go through this, our, our proposal is to compensate for what we're filling here by creating a volume in what we're calling the compensatory area over in this location. Any temporary stockpiling or, or storage of materials that they'll need to do for construction will go along the backside of the parking lot in this area, which this light blue line is the 50-foot offset from the zone AE line, so that's the only area that's available that's not regulated. So, from those two FEMA lines, the light blue line is the 50-foot offset, this light blue line is the 50-foot offset, so that's basically your upland review area. The the gold line that's very hard to see on this, right along here, that yellow line, that's the offset from the river, so it's beyond the fence line, so that's not an issue. There's a green wetlands line that closely follows the FEMA line. It goes a little bit beyond. So, the areas that we're working in that are under your regulatory process is, all has to do with the FEMA lines. So, basically, when we include this 50-foot offset from that FEMA line, 95, 99% of the work that we're proposing to do is, is regulated by you. The compensatory area is within the zone AE. The FEMA flood map, there's the building, there's the first AE zone, there's the AE zone that we're working in, flood plain for the river. FEMA base elevation mapping shows it at 31.5 feet here, 30.0 here, so looking at that, you say 30 and a half is right about here, 31 is right about there, so we're going with our base flood elevation of a 31, which is supported when you look at the topography. The 31 contour is very close to where the AE zone line is. Soils map from NCRS is, will tell you exactly what you would expect it to tell you, that this is Udonthens and urban land, all filled however many years ago that that whole area was filled to build those manufacturing facilities, I'm sure, so poor fill soils. So, this is the area where the addition is gonna go on the northeast corner of the building. So, this is the driveway that was permitted in 20, with the 2018 approval. The truck traffic comes in through the employee parking lot, down this driveway, counterclockwise around the building. So, the addition is gonna go in the area that's grass here, almost to the edge of the existing road. Same, same thing looking from north to south, back towards the front of the building. That's a small detention basin that was part of this permit. This driveway from the high point where it comes off of the end of the employee parking lot, this is all sloped towards this detention basin, and obviously runs into the detention basin right at the low point where the grass doesn't grow. So, there's the detention basin back in September with the outlet structure. That's the detention basin last Friday after the two-ish inches of rain that we got on Thursday. There's a little bit of water in the bottom of it. At this point, 20 or so hours after the storm ended, it's not up to the outlet pipe, but that structure, the outlet structure, has a small inlet pipe into it that goes around the corner to an existing catch basin behind the building that ties into an existing line that drains into the flood plain of the river. So, that's the area of the work that we're, where the proposal, proposed addition is gonna go. So, one change that we made to the plans that you have in front of you in the full submission package is the location of this truck ramp and the equipment that we, that's known as the hopper. It's the material processing where it's dumped from the truck and gets lifted into the plant. In the plant, it's here. We're turning it 180 degrees and moving it to the back of the site, so instead of it being here, it's now gonna be in that location with the equipment behind it. I'll show you why in just a second. The edge of the driveway changes a little bit. There's really no change to impervious surfaces or anything. I just wanted to let you know, when you look at these plans that you're gonna see right now, it looks a little bit different than the set you have, and it will be the final set as we get there. Wrong way. So, what happens, the reason why we needed to do that, is the existing hopper on the west side of the building, the truck backs up to it here, the material is dumped, goes up through an elevator into a conveyor system that's up in the ceiling of the building that distributes it, distributes it to these three conveyors that go down and fill up individual bins with the raw material that then gets processed inside the plant. So, because that's on this end of the building, the equipment inside needs to work the same way, so we just, we needed to move the hopper to the back of the building so that those things line up. And just so you can see what it does, this is what happens. The truck comes on the truck ramp, the material goes up the elevator tower into the ceiling, there's a series of tracks up there that deliver the material, and it dumps down into each of these individual bins. So, that's the purpose of the addition, is this is going to be raw material area with additional bins so that they can manufacture additional product, 'cause they're that busy and that good at it. So, existing conditions, demolition plan, this is the driveway that's there now. That's where the little detention basin is, grass over towards the fence. The addition comes down to right about that location in what is now grass and goes all the way to line up with the back of the building. We're gonna remove all this pavement, build the building, and, keep going the wrong way, sorry, and repave the driveway, which will now slope in the opposite direction towards the fence line, and we're gonna create a detention basin on this side of the driveway, where it used to be on this side of the driveway. The driveway narrows so that we can fit the building in, but it's still the same thing. It's one-way circulation for truck traffic, counterclockwise around the building. All trucks come in this way and go around the building that way. Even the loading docks in the front of the building, they drive all the way around the building 'cause they need to be able to come into the front of the building and to be able to make the swing to back up it. Go away. So, what we're doing here is grading the, grading the driveway in that direction down to, we actually have a catch basin structure with an outlet pipe, rather than let it leak off of the pavement, simply because of that issue of grass not being able to grow and any kinds of erosion, we thought it would be a better idea to put a catch basin in there that has a sump that'll be able to catch anything that comes off of the pavement and not dump it directly into the detention basin. So, we're creating the detention basin with an outlet structure that ties into the catch basin at the back of the building. that ties into the catch basin at the back of the building, which is where the existing detention basin ties into. It goes into a pipe that comes across here that goes into settling basin off into the flood plain of the river. So, when we go from here, the compensatory area is just off of this location right here. The storm drainage for the roof, the existing roof, the entire roof is drained to an interior drainage system. So, all of the roof leaders go to interior piping. That all goes out through a single pipe that's roughly in this location, which is a 24-inch pipe that goes to where the riprap that you'll see in just a minute, the riprap outfall that goes to the river is. So, all of the additional impervious for this is going out to the west side of the site. So, we have two issues. We have a detention issue and we have the filling of the FEMA zone issue. Our proposal is, is that we're going to create a basin next to, that's the riprap swale that goes out under the fence to the river with the pipe from the roof drainage of the building, which also picks up some of the drainage on the backside of that site. It has the outlet structure from the detention area, goes into this pipe that goes out through that riprap, which is this riprap right here. Looking from this direction, you're looking at this flat area. Our proposal is to create a basin there that has enough volume for the detention that we need to provide for the addition project and also has enough volume for the compensatory flood storage for what we're filling in the FEMA zone with the building project. So, what'll happen is the pavement to the rear now does slope towards this edge of pavement and it all just runs off, as it does here, into this area that's just left basically unmoaned between here and the fence line. So, we're going to create that in this location. In Erin's report, she talks about this location being very wet and there was standing water and I don't remember exactly when I took this picture, but I've never been out there where it hasn't been wet there. It's a very, very, very flat area. There's really no slope from the pavement out to the fence. There's no slope north to south. It's just an area that stays wet. But anyway, we're going to create the detention, detention and compensatory area in that same location. So, what we need to do for detention is we have our civil engineer who did his study of the addition area. We're decreasing the CFS flow on that area of the site based on what's there existing now. And the reason why that happens is because we're decreasing, actually decreasing the amount of pavement that's over there. But we still have the building to deal with. The building doesn't drain on that side of the building. The building drains the other way. So, we have the two numbers of the decrease in volume that we have and then the increase in volume that we have for the building gives us a net volume that we need to detain on site. 4,524 cubic feet. What we're going to do with that is the 4,524 cubic feet, the detention basin we're creating right next to the addition on the east side has a volume of 3,300 cubic feet, which means we need to provide 2,224 cubic feet that we're going to designate in the basin that we're creating on the west side. The other thing that we do is we're filling a 4,420 cubic foot volume in the zone AE with the building addition portion of the project. We're going to take the detention volume number that we need and the cubic foot volume of the compensatory flood storage that we're filling on this side, add those two together and we've created a basin on the west side that has a little over 6,000 cubic feet of volume. 4420 of it's compensatory. 1224 of it is detention. And that's the, that's our proposal to take care of the detention issue and the compensatory flood in the one basin that we're creating on that side.
Let me ask you this. That basin's four feet deep?
Three-ish, three, three and a half.
And what, at what level did you hit water?
We, we haven't dug a hole out there.
What if you hit water at two feet? Then you don't have the compensatory storage anymore.
Then we would have to change the shape of the basin. So...
I don't see how you can draw a basin unless you know where the water table is right there. And yet, water's probably wet because the water's sitting right up there.
The thought is, is because there's this six-foot trench with the riprap in it where the outfall is, that's about six or seven feet deep at that point. The thought is, is that if the water table right next to it is at the surface right there, it would be bleeding out the side of that slope and it doesn't. I think it's just standing water that sits on the top of really bad soil that doesn't drain.
But you don't, you're in here at this commission and you don't know that yet. I would have thought that would have been, first, you did all the work of designing a retention basin. It may not be in the right spot. But continue, it's your, it's your application.
That's basically the presentation. That gives you an idea of what we're planning on doing and we'll take questions.
Commissioners, Caroline?
I do have one question. Um, you said that your product goes in through your roof? And then, is there any way that the chemicals that you're using, is there any concern with draining the runoff from the roof? And you were talking about it coming around. There's no way they would meet the chemicals and the, anything on the roof. Like, I'm seeing this picture. I don't know what, on this one page, there's a picture with four different, it looks like there's an opening. Is that your roof? Yeah, this picture. So, it comes in...
That, that's a skylight.
Okay, that's a skylight, okay.
Yeah.
So, there's no opening like through your roof in any way that your product goes through and that runoff would be draining off somewhere?
It goes, it, it goes on a conveyor and is lifted up through, I don't know how that works, but it goes, it goes up this elevator shaft, across and then down into the building. So, there's some kind of, it's sealed.
Okay, okay.
So, yes, the material is...
Sealed. Thank you.
Ally?
I have no questions at this moment.
Nick?
I, uh, it's obvious, just being good stewards, you didn't live up to your good stewardship because you've got products stored out there. And when we gave you permission to do this project, that west side of that building was supposedly supposed to have that swale in it and the trucks were supposed to pass by it. There was even talk when it was being designed that you may want to put the ramp in to run your product up into the building, which is fine. As far as I'm concerned, go, you, I would want you to go away or go to the east side because what's, what's wrong with all the loading dock doors when you come down the hill before you drive around the front of the building? What's going on there? Do you have trailers there? Do you have vehicles here? Because I noticed all the pictures you took, it doesn't show anything in that big area. And that was quite a big area you had. So, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with you doing anything to the west side of that building. But leave it the way it is.
Jeff?
No questions.
Erin?
Well, my big question is, where should they site their compensatory flood storage slash detention basin? I asked a few months ago for borings or whatever soil information to dig down there. I think it's poor Phil, you know, that doesn't drain, like, like Mr. Linden said, from when they took out all those junk thermospas that were there. The hot tubs were piled there and the DEP came down and ordered them removed. And the former owner removed them and filled the hole in with probably, you know, fill that won't drain, right? So, it's, they got to figure out how to, where to put the compensatory flood storage area to make it work. Because right now, it's wet. I mean, tonight it's wet. It's always wet when I'm out there. So, you know, that's not going to fly if it's wet today.
And part of that is in the upland review area and part of it is not, where it's projected to go.
I don't, no, I don't think the retention pond is anywhere near the upland review area.
I have this like massive map with yellow all over it that looks like there's a, a loop of upland review area around that riprap drain site.
Actually, I was just trying to find it. Tom, what, what page is your compensatory flood storage area shown on? What sheet?
Um, the first one after the cover sheet, L 1.0.
L 1, L 1.0, okay. Oh, here it is. Okay, so it's real snug to that riprap ravine, sort of. It's real snug to that, okay.
And then this diagram shows the riprap ravine being surrounded by upland review area.
Yeah, yeah, it is in the upland review area because, because of that drainage swale. That riprap drainage swale, you know, carries flowing water. So, we, we regulate anything back from flowing water. So, that's why it's in the upland review area. In the area of the compensatory, which is fine for it to be in the upland review area. That's fine.
Wait a minute, the compensatory area?
Yeah.
I, I thought the only thing that was in the upland review area is the temporary stockpile area.
Well, I, in my environmental planners' report, oh, I'm sorry. In the packet that went out Friday night, there was a March 15th letter to the applicant. And I've attached, I think you all got it, yellow...
I know, but his presentation a little while ago, I believe I heard him say that the only upland review area was the temporary stockpile.
No, that's the only area that's outside of the upland review.
Oh, outside of the upland review?
Yes, that, that tiny little island where the stockpile area is the only place...
So, the compensation, compensatory area is in the upland review.
Yes.
It's within the 50 feet of the wetlands. Thank you for correcting me.
So, I, I zoomed in. I'm having trouble seeing it myself and realize that I can zoom in.
Not big enough?
I can almost see it from here. So, there's the FEMA floodplain AE line.
Yep.
Here's the fence. Here's the pavement. So, 50-foot offset from that line is the light blue line. So, this area is not regulated.
But it is.
No, it's 50 feet from here to here. This AE line around the detention basin that's there is 50 feet from here to here. That's not regulated.
I can't really see the riprap swale on there.
The riprap swale isn't on here. I'm up at the, I'm at the top of the site.
It's on, on your map that you marked up with the yellow.
So, the riprap swale is, yes, is completely regulated. Everything in there is regulated.
And 50 feet around the riprap swale is also regulated?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We're not working outside of it for the compensatory area. The compensatory area is totally within the AE line.
Yes, it's also in the upland review area.
Correct.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
And...
It's, it's under your purview.
Okay, don't you have the whole western area to work with? All the, where it lines up against your parking lot? That whole western area you can work with, right?
No.
No?
There's a, there's a small flagged wetlands down here that if you go out there, probably has water year-round. It's always there.
Yeah, but you, you...
That's regulated.
I think you got more territory. I'm going to let you figure it out.
Right there. Right about there. So...
Say that again because it's not on the mic.
Part of, part of their DEP permits for regulated areas on this site, they have a contaminated soil area way up in the, in the north in that little triangle as it goes to the back where the railroad tracks are. This area over here is also regulated by DEP under the whole permit that they have for monitoring of soils.
Which area? I, I can't see it.
Right here.
The wetland?
The southwest corner. The wetlands in that southwest corner, that whole area is regulated.
I was unaware of that.
You cannot dig in there. It's the, it's a DEP permit. So, that...
Is it on your plans? Is that noted on your plans? I don't, I didn't know that.
No, it's not.
It should, the other area was noted. This area is not noted, so we got to, we got to add that note. Okay, go ahead.
So, the area south of the riprap, we can't do it there. We can do it north of the riprap and we can go out there with a backhoe and dig a hole to see if it fills up with water, to see where the water is. And if there's groundwater at, let's just say the groundwater is two feet down, then the basin needs to be designed to not be more than two feet down, which just means the basin gets bigger in area. And we can certainly do that. But on this site, this is really the only area available for compensatory storage. Unless we take down the fence and go cut down all the trees that are beyond the fence in the floodplain because they do own all the way out, they, they own another 50, 60 feet beyond the fence line. But we don't want to go and cut down trees to do storage out there. So, that's the area that's available. So, it's a, as, as you say, Mr. Chairman, it's an issue of what, if any groundwater is out in that area, we can dig a couple holes and find out what it is and change the shape and depth of that if we need to.
What else you got, Erin?
Okay, they, they got placards. They came in and got placards from me. I don't know if the placards are up yet. That was for their original permit. They were supposed to put up wetland placards. I didn't see them today.
What else?
On this thing, on this plan? The town engineer hasn't reviewed it. Um, I'd like to hear her comments back on, you know, the drainage aspects of the new, the two drainage basins that are proposed, the computations and such. But the number one thing is this compensatory flood storage here and what kind of, how can it drain? What kind of soils under there? Where's the groundwater table? That's my number one thing.
So, you got some work cut out for you?
We'll get you an answer.
Okay, and we'll see you next month?
Sure.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Let me clean up a little bit here. All right. Okay, you, now you guys are in, understanding what we're looking for. You're under control. You can talk with Erin during a month.
Absolutely.
Okay, going on to new business. A 164.3, 103 North Colony, North Turnpike Road, Joseph Rcello, requesting a bond release.
Yes. Oh, no, not for tonight. I said to him, I, it just came in. I said to him, I will make a date with him to go out and look and look at his property. But every time I drive by, there's piles of fill along the, near the river and so on, so...
Okay. All right, new applications, we'll go through quickly. One is 822 4.1, 14 Research Parking Area. 822 4.2, 25 Kendraki.
That one, by the way, I'll make the comment. The Southwest Conservation District is going out there and helping them with their stream design, their stream stabilization design.
This has, this has nothing to do with Broccalo, does it? That crossing at Broccalo, this is a residential house?
Yeah, it's resident, backyard, yeah.
822 4.3, 12 Mansion Road. You want to talk about this at all?
Yeah, that one, it just also appears down below under violations. Number seven, on page two, number seven, there's a violation. And we're, I'm working with the owner, trying to fold it into an application, which you saw in your packet. Oh, it's not, you know, we can deal with it next month. It just came in.
Is this something you can see from the road?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. If you slow your car down, you can see.
From Mansion Road?
Yes, you can see.
Well, there seems to be an unfortunate situation where this couple wanted to add some material to their backyard and the contractor brought in concrete, tree stumps, all kinds of bad, bad material. And it's right then and it needs a wetland permit to be there, let alone this material is not the material that should be. The next problem is that these folks have had some major health issues for being young and we've got, we've got a situation, a couple, a couple has got some problems that we've got to try and work with them to get straightened out.
I will point out, nothing's in the wetlands. It's all in the up, the fill is in the upland review area.
Okay. All right. 822 4.4, 1251 Old Colony Road, James Delaney. This was a former mobile home park. Is this right next to the major violation we've got right there? What was that used to be? Three Oaks or something? Was that the name of that? Goes back a long time. Okay. 822 4.5, 40406 South Orchard, Executive Dodge. Is, is this, uh, did we give this an, an administration approval?
Yes, as you can see on the top of page two, it says granted on Monday.
Oh, I see it up there.
Yep.
Above the elections.
I do have a copy on the cart, one copy.
This is something that was done five, six, seven years ago. It's all in place. It's all stable. We had a brief discussion that tearing it apart would probably do more damage than any good. So, she and I decided administration approval would be okay. Okay. Before we get into that, want to go to violations. I don't want to miss out on violations. Okay. Violations, this one stay remains in fact, uh, on 1245 Old Colony. What's, what are they waiting for? Are they waiting for...
They're, they're waiting for the town planner and me to sit down and have them come in.
Okay. Uh, 950 South Colony Filling. What were they supposed to do? Isn't this where they filled around the trees?
Yes, on the hill and, um...
What were they going to do?
The commission said the hill, the fill could stay as long as they cleared out around the trees. And I did go over there about a month ago and they, they got more, half the, they did half the work. And they were supposed to put up a fence so people wouldn't throw, like, couches down? Well, there's more couches down. So, but they did some of the work. They did.
All right. So, they're, they're in agreement with what's going on?
I think I need to circle back to them and say, you did good. Just do a little more. Hopefully, those trees won't die. Maybe it's too late. I don't know.
8, this was, uh, number three, 822.1, 12 and 16 North Avenue Road, clearing the floodplain. They haven't done anything else in there, right?
No, I'm, I'm...
And it's all stable?
I'm not, yeah, it's stable. I'm not concerned about that.
Well, do we want to take it off of violations?
I think so.
Take it off. Okay. Uh, violation remain, notice of violation remains, remands, 11 Trumbull Drive, Jay Corbin.
I, I did not get a chance. I meant to go out there today. Did not get a chance.
1468 Tuttle Avenue?
Same.
Okay.
Didn't quite get there.
33 Summerwood Drive.
Oh, that, that's interesting.
Hey, this, from what she told me, that, uh, this is the people that, that had a contractor come in and told them how, going to give them a backyard while they hauled so much material out and created a stream for the water to run out the backyard, down the storm sewer, down into the whole storm system with sediment. Lawsuits are flying all over the place. And apparently, the contractor that did the work is now out of business, you say?
Yes. Sold his business.
Sold his business.
Apparently. That's what I was told by, by this owner here, yeah. And this contractor cut a 14-foot wa, rough wall in the backyard, 14-feet-high cliff, raw cliff. And that's still there today. And actually, yesterday, the owner came in with a plan to finish it off. He applied for an extraction and fill permit from Planning and Zoning, special permit yesterday, and brought in a plan.
To straighten it out, but...
Except the plan doesn't have a retaining wall. The town engineer will have to look at this. They're just, they planned to stabilize it just with, um, silt, hay bales and silt fences and put in topsoil and grass. I don't know if that'll hold a 14-foot-high bank in.
But it's a, it's a kind of a stretch as a wetlands problem.
Yeah. The only reason it's a wetlands problem is because the dirt was going down the wetland down the street in...
See, that's where that ended up. And number seven, Mansion Road, we just talked briefly about. Okay. Back up to item G, elections. I don't think you have enough people to have elections.
Correct. You have to have a full, full slate of people, yeah.
Uh, main members or ma, ma, main members with alternates?
Not sure. I could check on that.
Either way, it makes no difference. And then going on to budget, that's pretty much in place. There's nothing new, exciting, is there?
No, and the mayor's going along with the budget that you, you saw, Jim. Yeah.
All right. So, the rest is some communications. You can go through them, but there's, there're either training programs...
Tonight, I did hand out the Spring Lake, number three on here, Spring Lake. I did hand out a copy of that letter because I forgot to put it in the packet Friday. It was supposed to go in the packet. I handed it out tonight, number three.
Also, number seven?
And I also handed out number seven, which is a good letter to have, to show people. People that don't know, they really don't know. They think a swamp is a well and they don't know that we, our jurisdiction extends beyond just the swamp.
All right. Anything else to come before us tonight?
Uh, yes, I just, I do want to point out, uh, number 12, we used to get this, this is a great magazine. We used to get it physically. Now, it's online. Everyone's going to forget about it. So, I want to make sure, it's a very excellent, if you want to catch up and start learning more about what's not only just wetlands for the new folks on the board, but for what's going on in the state of Connecticut, this is a great magazine and now it's online. Number 13, I wanted to really stress to Jeffrey and Carolyn, the two new members, I strongly recommend taking this training program. It's online. Of course, because it's online, you can stop and start it and stop and start it. So, it's, it's very convenient and it'd be great to get you up to speed.
You are so true about when they went to digital from, from actual print. We have trade magazines that I don't open up digital anymore.
You forget, yeah.
They're very good trade magazines. All right. Commissioners, anything else to come before us tonight? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose that we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?[1671.83]